Councillors, we're having a...
Hey, everybody.
Councillors, we're having a...
(laughing).
All right. Meeting is called to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, salute to the New Mexico flag, and an invocation. Please rise. Councillor Rivera, will you lead us in the pledge? Councillor Harris in the salute to the flag. And Councillor Ives, an invocation, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zealous symbol of our friendship amongst united cultures.
And if I could ask everybody to bow their heads as we begin. As we gather here tonight with a newly constituted council and our new mayor, we ask, of course, for detailed attention to the matters that come before us, that we make informed decisions, that we make our decisions based upon all that is presented to us, and that we always act in the best interests of the people of Santa Fe. We ask for civility in this room and across our community as we debate these issues within our city, and we ask that we always act in the best interests of the people of Santa Fe. Should we... Is there anybody for whom we should pray this evening? Special mention, special intentions? Very good. Amen. All right. Thank you very much. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Abeta.
Here.
Councillor Harris.
Here.
Councillor Ives.
Here.
Councillor Lindell.
Here.
Councillor DeGera.
Here.
Councillor Romero-Worth.
Here.
Councillor Vihil Koppler.
Here.
Councillor Villarreal.
Present.
Mayor, you do have a call and present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Second. Voice vote on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the consent calendar. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent calendar tomorrow? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see the item, I'm sorry, but I want to remove the item regarding the state employees credit union reimbursement.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, that item is actually on our discussion agendas. You don't need to pull it at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that consideration, approval of the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? All right. I think we can do that with a roll call vote.
Yes. Councillor Abeta.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor Ives.
Yes.
Councillor Lindell.
Yes.
Councillor DeGera.
Yes.
Councillor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Councillor Vihil Koppler.
Yes.
And Councillor Villarreal.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. This also requires a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Very good. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Presentation.
We have none this evening.
That will take care of that. We now move to the organizational session, and you should each have in front of you my appointments. My first appointment is Councillor Lindell as mayor pro tem. Is there a motion to approve that?
Move to approve.
Second? All right. And a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of parliamentarian, Councillor Ives. No vote required, I am informed, so we will proceed with that. Now we go to the appointment of city council committees, and I'd like to read them for the record. The Finance Committee, Councillor Abeta Chair, Councillor Rivera, Councillor Lindell, Councillor Romero-Worth, and Councillor Harris. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second? All right. And that is a voice vote as well.
Yes, sir.
So all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Public Utilities Committee, Chair, Councillor Rivera, Councillor Romero-Worth, Councillor Ives, Councillor Villarreal, Councillor Vihil Koppler. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second?
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Public Works CIP and Land Use Committee, Councillor Ives Chair, Councillor Vihil Koppler, Councillor Abeta, Councillor Harris, Councillor Villarreal. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Thank you. And those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we move to the other appointments, and I will just do those one at a time as well.
Yes, sir.
So city committees, Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee, Councillor Vihil Koppler would be the chair.
Correct.
And...
Move to approve.
Second? Good. And those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Community Development Commissioner, Councillor Villarreal Chair. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who would oppose, say no. We're all good on that. Motion carries. Economic Development Advisory Committee, we have Councillor Abeta as the chair. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Economic Development Review Subcommittee, Councillor Lindell Chair. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second? Thank you. Voice vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mayor's Youth Advisory Board, Councillor Villarreal, City Council Liaison. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? And those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Public Safety Committee, Councillor Rivera Chair.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Conservation Committee, Councillor Romero-Worth Chair. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Second? Good. Those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we have joint... Appointments to joint boards.
Yes, sir.
The Buckman Direct Division Board, Direct Diversion Board. The appointments are Councillor Ives, Councillor Harris, and alternate Councillor Vihil Koppler.
Move to approve.
Second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. North Central Regional Transit District Board, Councillor Romero-Worth.
Move to approve.
Second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Regional Juvenile Justice Board, Councillor Abeta.
Move to approve.
Second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Santa Fe Metropolitan Transportation Policy Board, Councillor Lindell, Councillor Rivera, Councillor Romero-Worth, Councillor Abeta as the alternate.
Move to approve.
Second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Solid Waste Management Joint Powers Board, Councillor Harris, Councillor Vihil Koppler, and Councillor Villarreal.
Move to approve.
Second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Regional Coalition of Landlocked Communities, Councillor Ives, alternate.
Move to approve.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That completes the appointment of city council committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We now move to the final report on the 2018 New Mexico Legislative Session. It's informational only, and Mark Duran will lead us on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Councillors, I am Mark Duran. I was already a little nervous giving this report, and then I saw that I would be the first presentation after your formation.[1217.83][1217.83](laughing) And so if you need to give me a little bit of indulgence, please do. Mr. Mayor and some of the Councillors, I have to say that I have never even met you. I look forward to meeting you further and getting to know you, and of course, working with you as your legislative consultant at the New Mexico Legislative Session. I think overall, it's fair to say, and we all know, the session has concluded, and the governor's signing and veto period has ended. Overall, it was a pretty smooth legislative session in that it was the governor's last legislative session. It was a financial session and not a statutory session, and there was money this legislative session, which always helps, and of course, which was a stark contrast to the year before, where we were in dire financial straits, given the financial condition that the state was in. All the way to having some $300 million of new money available this legislative session. Of course, it wasn't all available. The legislature had to go and fill some gaps and some holes from the deep cuts that they made just the year prior. But with that budget situation, which was a positive budget situation, one of the things that we track very closely in terms of the budget and the operational budget is securing no changes to the current hold harmless payments that the city of Santa Fe gets. And I know that you have all received a report from me, or hopefully that you have. I send reports throughout the legislative session, a final report, and then after the governor's action. And so that was very positive. That's the number one thing we track in terms of operational budget funding for the city of Santa Fe. After that, there were some positives. A couple of projects that were either current priorities of ours or past priorities of ours received funding. Some $225,000 for the New Mexico homegrown food legislation. I know that I worked with you, Councillor Villarreal, on that. We were very happy about that. And kudos to Senator Nancy Rodriguez, who, four years ago, when we pushed a lead program and it didn't get funded then, she pursued it every year since, and this year was able to attend... obtained some $400,000 for that project. Also, I should point out that not directly for the city of Santa Fe, but because of the positive financial situation, state employees received a 2% compensation increase. That's important for Santa Fe because, of course, how many state employees are in the city, how that attributes to the economy, et cetera. So it was not only positive from an operational budget standpoint, but it was positive from a capital outlay standpoint. Capital outlay, you remember, last legislative session, there was no capital outlay, as the legislature used capital outlay money to plug one-time holes in the operational budget, something not seen before or not been done in a long, long time. Nonetheless, there was no capital outlay money last year. There was two sources of capital outlay money available this year. One, severance tax bond fund money and general obligation bond money. Traditionally, the money that we go after, aside from senior citizen projects, which are usually included in the geo-bond source of money, we traditionally go after our local projects and our citywide priority from severance tax bond money. We were very, very successful there. I'm very happy to report that our number one city priority, $1.5 million for the airport, was fully funded. And as a result of the airport being fully funded as our number one citywide priority, and quite frankly, the way we got it funded was to propose to the legislature that the city of Santa Fe, the municipal airport, was actually a statewide project. And of course, working with our great Santa Fe legislative delegation, in this instance, particularly Speaker Egoth, Leader Worth, and State Representative Carl Truehill, this project was able to be included as a statewide priority along with other airports across the state. Now, I have to tell you, that was... There were some anxious moments in regard to that, because what we were able to do is to put it in the statewide priority and then immediately go to our local legislative delegation and to ask them to use their local money to fund our district priorities. So as you can see in the report, we then got about another $500,000 of various money for our local district priorities. Well, the anxious part came when the legislature was still negotiating with the governor, House Bill 306, which was the capital outlay bill, where our statewide priority was included. And those negotiations at various points had the airport at zero, at half, totally funded, back to zero, and we were not able to go back and change what had already been committed to the local priorities. So some anxious moments there, but it all worked out. Over $2 million we were able to see... receive in capital outlay, in addition to the sum $625,000 in operational money. The governor didn't touch any of those with her veto pen, so very, very positive in that regard. I'll just... I'll wrap up fairly quickly here. In terms of statutory legislation, we tracked and worked on various pieces of legislation. I worked with several of you on various pieces of legislation. The Local Election Act, that did pass. House Bill 98 got signed by the governor. I think one of the things we were able to do was to carve cities out, and especially the city of Santa Fe, out of that bill. What that bill says is the community colleges and school boards and ASECAs and all those elections will now be moved to November. We were able to keep our election in March, but you have the ability in that legislation, if you so chose, to move the election to November with those other elections. You can keep it where it is, or you can move it to the November election. There was the PNM legislation. That legislation eventually died in committee. There was the small cell tower legislation. I think you're all familiar with that. We were initially against that legislation, then went to neutral as we worked various amendments on the legislation. It eventually passed. There was the airport aviation landing fees. I know I worked with Councillor Harris on this. It was a piece of legislation that passed that would allow us to charge fees for any planes landing at our airport on our airstrip. The governor eventually vetoed that legislation. Various other legislation that we tracked and targeted, you can see in the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to any legislation with one caveat, and that is, we track a lot of legislation, and it's been a while since the legislative session ended. If there's not anything I can't answer, well, then I'll certainly follow up with you. I'll close now, Mr. Mayor and Councillors, by saying we couldn't have done any of this without our tremendous Santa Fe legislative delegation. The fact that we have a member that's a Speaker of the House and Representative Egoth, Leader Worth, State Representative Carl Truehill, Jim Truehill, Linda Truehill, very important to our delegation, Senator Nancy Rodriguez, Senator Liz Stefanics, just an excellent, committed, dedicated Santa Fe legislative delegation. I need to give them thanks on behalf of all of us. And to the staff, Mr. Mayor and Councillors, they do an excellent job. To the city manager, to Celeste, to all the department heads, to everyone who gets involved in the legislative session, which seemingly seems like everyone somewhere along the way. And finally, Mr. Mayor, to former Mayor Gonzalez, who is always active in legislative sessions, Councillors, all the Councillors I worked with, including Councillor Dominguez, that is not here, very, very involved into current Councillors. And so I want to say thank you to all the groups that made this successful effort. And so with that, Mayor, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Are there questions? Are there questions? Councilor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, and this is on the measure to ensure that the new contractor in Los Alamos would be, would have been, subject to gross receipts tax. Can you just walk me through how that fared? I know ultimately, it was vetoed by the governor. And I'm curious what the talk in the legislature was with regards to the potential hole created that, by that which some estimated at some $50 million a year.
Mr. Mayor, councillor, I think that you summed it up pretty good. It was, it was the hole that people were concerned about, trying to fill that gap, trying to fill that gap fairly. Lots of discussion is who is responsible for it, government entity, non-government entity, who's running the lab, et cetera. In the end, I think you're correct, the governor did veto that legislation. I don't know what else to say about it. I could follow up with you if, if you wanted any more detail on it.
Certainly be curious to know what folks in the legislature feel the likely impacts of that will be. I know certainly the Los Alamos delegation was following that very closely and of course, huge impacts on Santa Fe, Espanola, and the surrounding communities. So, yeah, was just, if you had more information, I'd gladly get with you and hear what that is. So, thank you.
We'll go to Councilor Rivera and then Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions, Mr. Duran. Just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. Clearly, you did a great job based on what we received. I think it helps that we have a consistent and familiar face representing the city while there. We can always make it, but I appreciate the fact that you're there working so hard. I also appreciate the fact that you keep a surprise as to what's going on, the updates that you give us via email as to what's happening, who's doing what, and how it's all working. Extremely helpful. So, thank you very much for your hard work and look forward to many more years. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to echo Councilor Rivera's comments. I appreciate, this is kind of the first time that I had the real opportunity to work with you on the aviation landing fees. So not only is your report's good, but when I called, you responded in very short order and I do appreciate that. I wanted to ask, you know, the imposition of aviation landing fees, that was Senate Bill 18. Did that receive pretty deep support? Would you expect it to come back around?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Harris, I do. As, as a matter of fact, I'm still trying to get a, a debrief as to why it was vetoed. I believe that it had support, not only strong legislative support, as you mentioned, but support from various Department of Transportation entities. It always gets a little confusing once you start talking about airports, right? Because of then the, the federal aspect of it and then potentially some of the politics associated with that. It was a little bit of a head scratcher for me that it got pocket vetoed and I'm still looking for a debrief on that because I knew you'd be asking about it. And then I think we want to know what, what revenues we can potentially count on in the future at the airport. Nonetheless, directly to your question, I certainly think that will come up again in a 60-day legislative session.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Duran, for helping us and being proactive about communicating what was happening, even if we didn't respond or had, had specific questions. So I appreciate that. Just a correction, the, for the capital outlay, the Harrison Road lighting sidewalks is District 1. And I'm very happy to see at least we have a little bit to start with. We've, Council Lindell and I have been trying to get this going for a while, so I appreciate it. And just curious if you could, if you know for Senate Bill 23 for the Local Government Planning Fund, if there's, how that specifically helps the city of Santa Fe? Could you give us an example?
Mayor, councillor, as, as I recall the legislation, I think what that is going to do is, is allow the New Mexico Finance Authority to, to be the fiscal agent and receive applications to eventually distribute grant money, monies to municipalities for planning projects. I think that, that we still need to now see the details of how that is going to be worked out, but if I recall correctly, that's what that legislation does. It's, it's another opportunity, I think, for money for us.
Great. It's great to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Duran.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work and thank you for your report. We're very grateful. Let's move to item 13. Request to, for approval to allow Environmental Services Division to issue a refund to state employees credit union.
Mr. Mayor, here is my opportunity to say, state that I want to recuse myself because I am on the board of the State Employees Credit Union. And while there doesn't appear to be any substantial action here, I believe it's probably in the best interest to recuse.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Recently, we found the State Employees Credit Union, we were contacted by them and we discovered there was double billing. We were contacted because of concerns of illegal dumping in what they thought was their dumpster. Upon further investigation, we looked into it. There were five accounts on the property. Three of those accounts actually had dumpsters on it or were billing bills for dumpsters. Of those three accounts, there was actually two dumpsters on site. We contacted both State Employees Credit Union and Southwestern Plaza, the other individual that, for this particular dumpster. And we found that the Southwest Plaza had an agreement with State Employees Credit Union as well, other tenants on the property to use that one dumpster. So we, you know, we went back and looked. This goes back to 2003, August of 2003, when this peeked its head unfortunately. So we've gone 15 years double billing a customer and that's the reason this is such a high amount. So we, both Karen and myself spoke with, with the representatives, you know, found out what was going on. And we came to the conclusion that we needed to, to refund the money to State Employees Credit Union as they were being paid the bill through Southwest and through their account. We're currently, you know, the billing system we have currently doesn't give us the functionality to assign container numbers to each service address, especially when there's multiple container numbers. And our, we're been going through and we're looking at a new billing system that we've been working on. And this, that system does give us the functionality of assigning multiple containers to a particular billing address or service address. When we found that out, when we were going through this process, we established a procedure in the office. We're now going through and numbering all our commercial dumpsters located in the city that we can basically audit what's going on, make sure that this isn't occurring any longer or have any other instances of it occurring in the city. So, you know, we are working on getting that resolved.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, sir. Councilor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's actually a question more for the city attorney. So statute of limitations on written accounts, six years, we're looking back 15. What is the city's policy in this type of circumstance?
Mayor, councillors, Councilor Ives, I honestly can't answer that question now. I assume that one of the attorneys in the office was consulted about this.
Just curious. Yep. Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, Emmanuel, for bringing this forward. I know it's tough to admit when mistakes are made, but I'm glad you're doing it and you're doing it in a proactive way and looking at other companies and making sure that we're not creating the same issues elsewhere. My question was, did we look at, since we, our system doesn't have the process to kind of give refunds, did we look at maybe giving them credit for the amount they owed for the years, however much, however long it would be?
We did offer that, but they requested a, they did request a check be refunded.
So this was their request?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
With that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments, commentary, questions? I would make one comment, sir, and that is, I think, as Council Rivera said, it's hard to admit mistakes. It's particularly hard for public bodies to do it. And the only thing worse than not admitting it is trying to hide it. We all make mistakes. The question is, what do you do about it? And there's actually a term for this in, as I suspect my friend, Councilor Harris, knows, in the business community, this is called service recovery. When you make a mistake, you make it right and you make it right as quickly as you can. And by that, you build trust and you demonstrate good faith. And so I, I think that's an important way to think about what you're doing here, which is actually, while it's a mistake, it is a rectification of a mistake in a very public and honorable and honest ethical way. And, and with that, I would call for a roll call vote on the motion.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Council Divetta?
Yes.
Council Romero Worth?
Yes.
Council Vialli?
Yes.
Council Beta?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, she's bringing her back. We'll wait one minute. Thank you. We turn to matters from the city manager.
Mayor, I have none this evening.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney?
Mayor, I recommend we go into executive session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act to discuss the matters listed on the agenda.
Very well. I guess we need a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the governing body go into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda in accordance with the recommendation of the city attorney.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Can we get a roll call? Madam Clerk?
Council Ives?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Council Divetta?
Yes.
Council Romero Worth? Council Vialcopter?
Yes.
Council Vialli?
Yes.
Council Vega?
Yes.
Council Harris? Council Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
All right. With that, we will go into executive session. Thank you all. We will start the evening session at 7:00 and take up that agenda at that point. Thank you all. Thank you all.
All right. We're back. We're back, and I think we need a motion to come out of our executive session. Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the governing body come out of executive set, executive session stating for the record that the discussion in executive session was limited to the matters noted on the agenda.
Second, and we need to call the rule.
Yes. Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihilcopter.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Ives.
Yes.
And Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Now, I think the next thing we ought to do is change the order of business a bit.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we postpone the balance of the afternoon session until the end of the evening session and move directly to petitions from the floor.
Right ahead.
Okay. And what does that require? A roll call or a voice?
That'll be a voice vote, sir.
Voice vote. All those who approve the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. So, let's proceed to petitions from the floor, and I'd ask that we limit them to two minutes. And I would also ask that if the petition, the comment that you wish to make has already been made, we will, I assure you, hear you hear the petition without having it repeated so many times. So, please trust whoever is carrying your message that we will hear it and respect it. So. Okay. We're getting, the clerk is, please state your name and address for the record, and then we will listen.
David McQuaid, 2997, Kailas, Toronto. Good evening, Mayor, the councilors. I wish to congratulate the mayor and all the councilors that are returning or newly elected. Secondly, I'd like to mention that I am vice-chair of the Mayor's Committee on Disability. All of you are invited to come to our meetings. It's especially important right now because for years, we've been fighting and we're still fighting that cities seem to be in a backsliding position of not providing access for the disabled. I hope there's changes with the new administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Who's next? Did I just move forward? Yeah. We have to have a little bit of... Thank you for your cooperation. Yes.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. My name is Bianca Madrid. I live in forty-four twenty-nine Santa Lucia Street, and I'll be translating for Griselda.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Griselda Olguin. Mi dirección es treinta y nueve cuarenta y nueve Riverside Drive, Santa Fe, Nuevo México, ochenta y siete quinientos siete. Buenas tardes. Primero que nada, me gustaría felicitar al alcalde Weber y a los concejales recién elegidos. Mi nombre es Griselda, y estoy aquí con Poder Familiar y Proyecto de Earth Care. Esperamos que sus atenciones y visitas a la comunidad de la calle Aeropuerto continúen ahora que la compañía han terminado. Queremos que, queremos y debemos ser incluidos en planificaciones y tomas de decisiones de nuestro área. Por favor, recuerden que la mayoría de nuestras familias y jóvenes viven en el norte de la calle Aeropuerto, en comunidades de mayor necesidad y menos atención y servicios. Queremos programas una junta con respeto a nuestras propuestas para entrenamiento y desarrollo de trabajo para padres. Esperemos con interés trabajo con ustedes. Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, we'd like to congratulate Mayor Weber and the newly-elected councilors. My name is Bianca. I'm here with Poder Familiar, a project of Earth Care. We hope your attentions and visits to the communities along Airport Road continue now that campaigns have ended. We want and must be included in planning and decision-making in our area. Please remember that most of our families and youth live north of Airport Road, in communities with greater needs and few resources and services. We want to schedule a meeting regarding our proposal for training and job developments for parents. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi. Good evening. Derek Escobal, three sixty-nine Montezuma. Good evening, newly-elected and re-elected city councilors, and congratulations to Alan Weber on this mayoral win. And yeah, my name is Derek Escobal, and I'm a youth ally, supported by Earth Care. As you know, Earth Care facilitated the mayoral forum at the end of the, at the end of last month. We would appreciate if you, as mayor, honored the commitment of supporting youth organizations in Santa Fe to help give youth a strong and educated voice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Hugo Medina. I live in three eight three six Madison Road, which is the south side part of Santa Fe. I'm part of the New Mexico Dreamers in Action, or NMDA. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Weber. And we're just here to, well, we're here to support you and also to see if you can still, to point our proposals that we made on the, on the forum at Cesar Chavez Community School. As you can see, there's many of us from the south side, and we, we want to work with you to improve our community in that part of the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Miguel Acosta, three sixty-nine Montezuma. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the city council, both new and returning. It's nice to be in a forum where everybody doesn't have to answer the same question.
(laughing)
So, you get to be more creative here. Just following up again on the, on the conversations that we had at our south side forum, that there were some proposals that came from the different organizations that collaborated on that. But also, we want to make sure that besides just responding to individual and discrete proposals, that you take into consideration the communities, the various, various communities in the Airport Road corridor, for account, for commissions, boards, committees, so that people's voice can be a part of every conversation that happens here at, at City Hall, and not an afterthought, that, that everything gets published and communicated in as many languages as possible, so that there's civic engagement in a variety of, of languages and worldviews. We look forward to creating a stronger Santa Fe for everybody involved, and for having the, all the follow-up conversations that we need to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie Benanato, P.O. Box one six zero one, Santa Fe, New Mexico. I have copies of this that I will distribute to you, but I'm talking about ongoing problems at Salvador Perez Pool. And I think the mandate really at City Hall is to change the culture and make, become more transparent and responsible to citizens. And some of those citizens include seniors, and we certainly heard a lot of promises about seniors during the campaign. This, I hope that you will pay attention to what goes on at Salvador Perez Pool, because it's been misoperated for several years. Every winter for six months, we hear lame excuses about why the HVAC system isn't operating properly. The past three or four weeks, there have been, it's been incredibly cold in the pool, the air temperature in the pool, and I think that's because the humidifier is off. Seniors have left the pool early, or they have just turned around and not used the facility. I now know a woman today who just said, "I'm giving up. I can't be in the pool. It's too cold." She's been coming for over twenty-five years. She really would like to continue to use the pool, but it is absolutely too cold. And again, last Friday, it was closed. At first, they're fixing the HVAC system. They decide is before the HVAC even goes off, that they have to open all the doors, put all these fans on because of this chloramine buildup that they never tested for, and that would take several hours actually to get anywhere close to being concerned about. But we were pushed out of the pool. A giant fan was blowing over a third of the pool. People got out or just avoided using it, even though the fan didn't have to be on the pool at all. And then Ms. Royball, the head of the pools, said she was up to here with it. She'd close the facility, make them fix it on Friday. Well, it didn't get fixed. It's still cold today. It was still cold Monday, and we were pushed out of the pool totally without any results. So, we are asking for actual results. We need a new humidifier. We're tired of being told, we were waiting for this part and this part, now we're waiting for a contractor. They've rebuilt the whole thing by now, so many parts have been put into it. So, again, thank you for your attention, and I hope we will get some funding to fix this problem as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. I'm Terry Brown. I'm at P.O. Box two four two zero three, Santa Fe. I'm a patron of the Santa Fe, or the Perez Peru Pool. I'm not a senior, but I have issues with cold, and so the last few weeks, it's been up and down. So, I just want to say I would appreciate it getting fixed so that we can, I'm doing it for therapy, and so I need to have it at a warmer temperature, but I appreciate your help. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maria Perez, ten fourteen Don Juan Street, eight seven five zero one. Mr. Mayor and councilors, I want to just congratulate you all today. I am very happy about the democratic process through which this governing body got configured. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to the city clerk and to the PIO, Matt Ross, who did a tremendous job getting the public educated about ranked choice voting, and getting all the poll workers ready, and, and just running a smooth election and a really good electoral and campaign process with our first ranked choice voting election. I shared with the city and with some of their stakeholders the report that we got from our exit poll survey that we conducted on election day. I have some hard copies for anybody who's interested in that. I think that you all received an electronic copy today. Overall, the results were amazing. Ninety-nine point nine of vote, percent of voters had a valid ballot, which is incredible, and ninety-nine point six of voters are, something like eight out of nine voters had their vote count on the final round, so people really ranked. And people were really confident that this was a good, that their vote was going to count as they were intending it to be counted. So, thank you again. Congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you, Yolanda, again, and good luck. I'm here to help.
Thank you very much.
Everybody's shorter than me. Paul Gibson, Santa Fe, four Punta del Casador, eight seven five oh six, co-founder of Retake Our Democracy. Welcome, Mayor Weber.
Thank you.
And new councilors, and hello to all the old veteran councilors. Retake was actively involved with advocating throughout the year last year. We didn't always agree, but I hope that all of you realize that our intent was to do what we felt was best for Santa Fe, and in particular, for underserved neighborhoods and populations that are underserved. We're entering a new phase now with a new mayor, three new councilors, and thankfully, none of you are running for mayor just yet. So, maybe we'll be able to work together really cohesively. Retake Our Democracy has developed a twenty-four policy people's platform that served as the framework for a mayoral and city council voter's guide. None of those completing the survey, none, opposed any of the policies in that voter's guide. We realize that right now, you have a lot of top priorities that you have to address, so we're not expecting you to leap to just endorse everything we want, but we're hoping to work with you cohesively, collaboratively, collegially, and proactively. And, but one of our first policies is related to budget, and our hope is that you will take a look at, we don't want to budget for austerity. We'd like to see if there isn't some way to start identifying some funding streams now that you're not running for office. You may be able to actually say we'll increase revenues, and some proactive and progressive revenue streams, because otherwise, none of the social services, education, pre-K, renewable energy policies that we're advocating for can be implemented without some level of new revenue. Now, most of our policies are very low cost. So, I hope to work, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and congratulations on being here. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer Johnson, six oh five Sunset Street. I'm also with Retake Our Democracy, and I just want to welcome all of you and tell you how excited we are, I think also going through this process. Part of that was also with Poder Familia, and how excited we are to see them here today, and the Youth Alliance, Earth Care, and Chainbreaker as well, because I think we have incredible amount of information now to work with, what they've been doing over the last thirteen years or more. And I also have a little side thing that I just wanted to talk about a little bit. When we talk about housing issues here in town, I just wanted to bring up generally. We know affordable housing is a huge issue here, but what I'd also like to point our attention to is short-term rentals and the effects that it's having on our neighborhoods. And this also goes for second homes. There are some developments coming up, and if we go up Hyde Park Road, just to bring your awareness to the fact that occupancy is twenty-six percent in many of these places, these second, and sometimes they're third homes, and sometimes they're only occupied a week a year. And I just want us to be aware of that as we go forward, because I'm not sure that helps us at all. It's not helping the day-to-day New Mexicans that need a place to live. And I think it's just like us to consider that, and also the impact of short-term rentals. I can tell you, in my immediate neighborhood, there's nobody there to fight for our neighborhood. Where we had four houses, we now have twelve condos, and one of those is occupied full-time. Many of these are short-term rentals, and I'm afraid when we went from the three fifty to the one thousand limit, we are not holding true to the density or the lack of density we should have of short-term rentals in particular neighborhoods. And I think it's vital that we keep the integrity of our neighborhoods together, because we're the ones who vote. We're the ones here who are putting in the time to try to make the city better. So, thank you very much, and I'm glad you're all here. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Shelley Robinson, one point two Bronza Drive. Hi. My name is Shelley Robinson, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the city's Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. And we welcome you, first of all, Mayor Weber.
Thank you.
And new city councilors, and we look forward to sharing ideas with you on bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and sharing the road safety issues throughout the city. One of you lucky councilors gets to be our chairperson, and is it you? Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, we really look forward to working with you, councillor B Hill Coppler? Is that right? And, um, sorry. And we promise to keep it interesting and fun. It's hard work, we know, and we look forward to your leadership in the years ahead. So, pardon me for reading this, but I've got to get through it, and, but I'd like to make, give you a brief background on B-TAC, Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. I'm going to call us B-TAC. Where we've been and where we need to go. So, in two thousand and three, a group of committed citizens and bike riders formed the committee with the guidance of councillor Boucher. The resolution reads, quote, "The committee shall advise on policies, projects, ordinances, and funding as they relate to cycling and pedestrians as safe alternative means of transportation on roads and trails, and to pursue designation of the city of Santa Fe as a bicycle-friendly city." So, I've been on B-TAC since two thousand and five, and I want to give a shout-out to, to our committee members, and several are here tonight, past and present. If they could stand up. You guys stand up. Who's here? Great. Yay. So, and also, I want to shout, give a shout-out to the hundreds of volunteers, many that are in the, filling this room today, and to councilors Boucher and Maestis, our former chairman, chair, chairpeople. To city staff and to elected officials. Is that it, Yolanda? Really? Okay. Can I keep going?
Why don't you, what do you, what'd you got left?
I'm just going to tell you about the great things that B-TAC has done. I don't have to do that, but I thought you might want to hear some of the highlights, but I can move on and express my, I encourage you all to attend our, our B-TAC meeting, which is next Wednesday here in the chambers at five thirty, and we would be honored to introduce ourselves to you and to spend a little time answering your questions. So, next Wednesday, five thirty, right here.
Why don't you pass up your remarks, and we'll, we'll get them copied for every member of the council.
Great. Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Carl Gabel, ten fifty-one Chocoma Vista. And I'm going to ask a little indulgence, because there's about sixty-five people that I'm speaking for, and I have a prepared statement that I think runs about five or six minutes. And so, I'm hoping that, here's, here's a copy of the statement, that since I'm speaking for all of these people. Hello, my name is Carl Gabel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a Santa Fe resident for over thirty years. During an average week, I spend eight to twelve hours on my bike. My interest in speaking to you tonight are that I'm concerned about the safety of pedestrians and bicycle riders using the roads and paths in and around Santa Fe, and the way the laws are enforced when a bike, car, and car incident occurs. I have two basic messages I'd like to bring. One, we have a problem regarding the safety for bicycle riders and pedestrians. Two, we have advocacy groups in the city of Santa Fe that are prepared to help the city council formulate and execute, execute solutions. That's my main message. We have this opportunity to make a huge positive difference in the city and for the city residents. I ask you to please make it a priority to make, to make Santa Fe a bike-friendly community. It's the decisions you make and the resources that you're going to allocate over the next two to four years that can turn Santa Fe from a place where many bicycle riders fear many bicycle riders fear for their lives every time they take their bikes onto a road, and you can turn it into a community where, that is bike-friendly in terms of infrastructure as well as attitude. Through the work of city staff and BTAC, who Shelley just spoke to you about, Santa Fe has been designated a Silver Level Bike Friendly City by the League of American Bicycleists. This is a great accomplishment for Santa Fe, but actions speak louder than words, and in view of some residents, Santa Fe has slid backwards. Why am I concerned? You may or may not be aware of the numerous bicycle car crashes and pedestrian injuries, and pedestrians injured and killed in the very recent past. To convince you we have a problem, I'll quickly summarize just a few recent incidents. Two weeks ago, on County Road forty-one in Santa Fe County, an organized ride of fifteen of the Santa Fe seniors on bikes were approached from behind by a driver who aggressively passed and then stopped on the road as the group approached, put his car in reverse, hitting the riders in the front of the group. Three people were seriously injured. Some of them are here tonight. One person is still in the hospital while, with multiple fractured ribs, broken pelvis, and collapsed lung. Charges are still pending. The driver was not arrested at the scene, and now, nearly two weeks later, has not been charged. In November, my friend Irina was nearly killed when a car made a left turn in front of her as she rode on Alameda near Siler. She hit the side of the vehicle when she was going probably thirty-five miles an hour. Irina is a Santa Fe native, but last year, she spent the summer as a professional bike racer in Europe, racing and winning bike races at the highest levels in the world. As a result of the crash, she received broken collarbone, both thumbs were broken, one hand, the orbital around her eye, both lungs collapsed, and many of her teeth were broken, and she received traumatic, traumatic brain injury. She is now in constant rehab and therapy, trying to get her life back. The driver got a hundred and fifty-six dollar fine and in ninety days unsupervised probation. In, in December, another friend of mine, Gary, was riding to work on Baca Street, a shallow-marked Santa Fe bike route, when a careless driver who neglected to scrape the frost from a window hit him from behind and dragged him eighty feet. The driver was cited for careless driving. The case is still pending. In December, another friend of mine, Hillary, who's not here, was hit riding home from work on Highway fourteen. A driver made a left turn in front of her, and she struck the, and she struck the side of the car. She suffered a broken pelvis, multiple abrasions, and the loss of her bike. She went to the hospital and was told the officer would interview her after she was treated. In the end, the driver was cited for careless driving and failure to yield at an intersection. The driver said the reason she didn't see Hillary was that she was looking at the backseat while executing the turn. The police never interviewed Hillary. She finally obtained a copy of the report. Many of the details in the report were erroneous and did not accurately represent the subsequent events. In late February, two pedestrians were hit in Santa Fe. One was killed, one was killed, and in another incident, the person was severely injured and hospitalized. This is only a partial list of the incidents in the last six months. To put this in perspective, beyond the anecdotal information that I've just shared, federal statistics show that of the fifty states, New Mexico has the third highest average annual cyclist deaths per million people. That is three point one per million, per year. On a typical year, sixty-eight cyclists are killed in New Mexico, and in the majority of the cases, the cyclist is not his fault. However, the law of gross tonnage prevails when a car and cyclist collide. The cyclist loses. I hope I've convinced you we have a problem. My request to you, as a body that can make decisions and allocate resources, is to treat this as an opportunity. We are doing poorly. There is low-hanging fruit, and your actions can improve the situation. I'm not going to try, try to provide overly simplistic answers now. Instead, I appeal to you to use your resources and formulate and execute plans that will make Santa Fe a safer place for cyclists and pedestrians, young and old. My request is the following. Make bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements a goal of this administration. Utilize BTAC as a resource for expert advice on how to improve safety. Utilize other interested bicycle advocacy groups such as Bike Santa Fe, League of American Bicycleists, Bicycle Coalition of New Mexico, and Santa Fe Fat Tire Society. Distracted driving is a bad, is bad for everyone. It is especially bad for bicycles sharing the road. Address this problem. Don't tolerate the rampant cellphone usage and texting while driving. Look into the uniformity and consistency of investigation and charges of bike car and pedestrian car incidents. It's a slap on, on the wrist, is a slap on the wrist all a driver who causes life-changing injuries should get. So, you have an opportunity. Santa Fe offers tremendous resources for bicyclists and pedestrians. We have some wonderful bike trails and infrastructure, and more is being built all the time. That's, that's awesome. In the spring, over two thousand cyclists from all over New Mexico and surrounding states come for the Santa Fe century. People love to visit Santa Fe. Santa Fe can grow as a road and mountain biking Mecca. However, for this to truly materialize, the residents and visitors need to feel safe. Please take steps to make Santa Fe safer. The potential payoff is huge. You may, you might be saving my life or the life of one of my friends by taking action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and... Thank you, and please do leave your remarks for us so we can share them. You've got them all good. Thank you all for coming. Very much appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Bell. I am a small business owner downtown. I own a bicycle store called Mello Velo. Want to congratulate everyone who has successfully campaigned for their spot up there, and, and I look forward to getting to know you all, and hopefully collaborating with all of you to, to make Santa Fe a more cycling-friendly city. I've owned Mello Velo since two thousand and five. I've been a resident of Santa Fe on and off since about nineteen ninety-three. I remember riding here in the nineties, where routinely having things thrown at you from cars was acceptable and a very normal part of riding a bicycle in northern New Mexico. I was gone for about ten years and came back in two thousand and five to see that culture starting to shift and change. And over the last thirteen years, the city has done a tremendous job building infrastructure for us cyclists, so I'd like it to be acknowledged that we have gotten a tremendous amount of support from the city already. The La Tierra Trail System did not exist eight, nine years ago. The Santa Fe Fat Tire Society has been instrumental in maintaining and growing that piece of infrastructure. Our National Forest is a wonderful resource. The bike paths, the tunnel under Saint Francis, actually both of them, there've been a number of improvements that have really made a dramatic change, even just the visibility of the city's effort to support cycling. I have a little bit of a unique interest in that I have a business related to cycling. I employ ten people to fifteen people in season, six people year round. These are high-paying, unusual-skill jobs that I'm very proud that our community supports. I routinely deal with the visiting public of, of people visiting Santa Fe from elsewhere. Twelve years ago, no one came here from Denver. Now, everyone comes here from Denver. People come here from Austin, people come here from Portland, people come here from places like Minneapolis. These are cities with hundreds of miles of complex bicycle networks. They also have a tremendous large tax basis, too. I would like to encourage the city to put bicycle infrastructure in the city limits and in the county on the front burner, not only for public safety, but also to create a much more attractive city in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, councillors, Mr. Mayor. My name is Matt Picarello. Heard people are coming to talk about bike safety, so I want to come share some of my thoughts. I've got a list of a couple of recommendations in particular crossings. By no means a complete list of solutions or challenges. Like Carl, I probably spend eight to twelve hours a week on a bicycle in and around Santa Fe, but it's the twenty minutes a day crossing town to get to and from work that I'm probably the most at risk. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. Hawk signals, so the flashing lights, you hit a button on the rail trail. Actually, quite surprised at how often people actually stop for those, so I'd like to see more of those throughout the city. Paint isn't a perfect solution, but at least it helps with the visibility and driver awareness issues. And probably the biggest issue for me, just as I cross Aguafria, Sarrio, Saint Francis, and Saint Michael's to get to work, is crossings. I can't count the amount of times that I've stood at a crosswalk and had cars zoom by me making a right turn. We try to get in traffic and be traffic as cyclists, but if there isn't a car there, then, you know, you have to go and hit the button. So for cyclists and pedestrians, I just think that's a huge issue. I'm conditioned to look left, but maybe not everybody is, so it's just an accident waiting to happen, or has happened, as we've heard. Focusing efforts at crossings that connect bike paths, transit, and popular corridors, so all the crossings that I take to get to work, I pass South Capital Station, Galistao Street, where it has a connection to the rail trail. I ride Baca Street every day, which is kind of terrifying to hear the story of the guy being dragged eighty feet. So, that's all. My contact information is on this list, just to enter into the record.
Thank you very much.
Hope we continue to improve bike safety.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Weber and city councillors. My name is Craig O'Hare. I live at twenty-six oh one Soliloos Loop, Santa Fe. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you, all of you who just won your election, or in the case of councillor Lindell, just won your reelection. And I would also like to thank all of you for your service of the city of Santa Fe. It's no longer true for the mayoral position, but I think for the rest of you city councillors, when you add up all the hours, you're probably maybe barely making the city's living wage, if that. So, thank, thank you again. As you might know, I was one of the petitioners to bring the ranked choice voting issue before the district court. I didn't relish being in an adversarial position with the city, and so I just want to really acknowledge that I'm really glad it went so, as well as it did. I want to thank the city and the city staff, Matt Ross, the city clerk, and her staff, the Voting Center staff, for how well it went, and I'm very, very relieved that it, that it went very well. The marketing was great. I really wanted to vote for Roberto Rabbit, but unfortunately, he was not on the ballot when I went into the voting booth. Just a couple of quick issues I want to bring up that are near and dear to my heart. One is the La Entraida issue having to do with fiestas. I really hope this gets resolved before next fiestas. I understand a lot of progress has been made to that effect. There was a commitment two or three years ago to resolve this, and I really hope we get this resolved way before fiestas. But there was a, a global issue that came out of that. I, I was one of the participants in the demonstration that day, and it was really disturbing to find out that the city had established something called a free speech zone, where our First Amendment rights were limited to this caged-in, penned-in area. This is something in my twenty-three years living in the city I had never experienced, and I, I ask you to revisit this notion of a free speech zone and develop criteria or what have you, or do away with it altogether. But I think it really is not consistent with the city of Santa Fe. And then, the second issue I just wanted to bring up is affordable housing. Please address the affordable housing issue, not just for purchase, but low and very low-income rentals, and please distribute that affordable housing throughout the city, and don't shove it all onto the south and west side. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor and, and city councillors. My name is Tomas Vivetta. I am with an organization called Chainbreaker Collective. Chainbreaker is a membership-led economic and environmental justice organization. We have over seven hundred dues-paying members in Santa Fe, and we've been organizing in the city for over fourteen years. We wanted to just extend our welcome to the new mayor and new city councillors, and also let you know that we're excited to continue working with those of you who have been on these seats, and to start working and forming, continuing relationships with those of you who are just starting out in this role. Just for a little bit of background, I know there's a lot of bike folks in the, in the room. Chainbreaker has a bicycle resource center project, which has distributed over three thousand bicycles to people over the last decade or so who could otherwise not afford a bicycle. We've been engaged in policy and advocacy work. Try, we, we were instrumental in passing the bond in two thousand and nine to get money for, for transit, for the Swan Park, and for trails here in Santa Fe. We have educated over ten thousand people in bicycle mechanics and safety over the last several years. There is not a single bike shop in Santa Fe that doesn't or hasn't previously employed one of the mechanics that is trained through our shop. And over the last election cycle, when you have been out there campaigning, we were out there talking about equity issues and educating folks on ranked choice voting. We knocked on seventeen thousand doors over the last two months. We had about a twenty-five percent contact rate, meaning that we talked to close to five thousand people face-to-face, talking about ranked choice voting, and the equity issues we've been dealing with around housing and transit for the last several years. In our, we had a panel series, Edge of Equity series, that had hundreds of people attend talking about art without displacement, health without displacement, education without displacement, and, and investment without displacement. Some of you who attended, we appreciate your attendance, and we're looking forward to continuing having these conversations. We have several ideas and, and a lot of people, community energy around growing Santa Fe, desegregating our city, and working towards building a more equitable Santa Fe. We are, we're looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I, could I, could I ask you not, please not to applaud. It ends up with people then potentially booing, and it's just better if we acknowledge the statement without applauding. You can do, yes, I'm reminded you can make a silent applause is always welcome.
Santa Fe in silent?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trish Bellia. Bellia, B-E-L-L-I-A. I was fortunate to be raised in beautiful Santa Fe. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of you on a wonderful campaign. Glad you're here. Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your mayordom, or is that mayorhood? Congratulations to all of you. What a wonderful campaign, as it should be. I am here for a few reasons, but the main one is, I was not able to get a problem solved, and I'm, I'm speaking to my fellow citizens. I am unable to get a problem solved. To make it very short, an illegal wall was built right in front of the window of my house. Now, mind you, this is the only window that gives me any view of the sunset, and I never would have bought this house if it were not for that view. I invested in fourteen skylights. I love that light. This neighbor, to make it simple, built illegally. It is a piece of sheet metal that completely covers my view. I have exactly two inches, if you were to look at it, of sky, where now I don't see Saint Anne's steeple. I don't see the sunset. I just see that. We did find out, and I'd half struggled with the city. They said that it was legal. Come to find out, it was not. They went, he took it down. There was no permit issued. He was not fined the hundred and fifty dollar for no permit. He put it back. Same fence. Put it back, still nothing. I can see maybe not even an eighth of an inch more from my standing in my, in my house. In any case, he did move it back. The, the fence is still illegal. Still illegal. I have lost, in July, it will be more than twenty-four thousand dollars of income because of the city not repairing a mistake and saying it was legal. It does not fall on me. I don't think anyone here would appreciate this beautiful New Mexico sky being covered from one day to the other. It needs to be rectified. And it is the city's fault, and I have done my research, and a lawyer is involved. So, I just want the city to help me out here. Any one of us could sue the city. You made a mistake. Who wants to do that? We all work together to fix this so nobody else can. And very quickly, March, Santa Fe Animal Shelter, all pets half-off over five months.
Thank you.
And don't forget to volunteer. This is what makes Santa Fe wonderful. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Jackie Shane, interim president of Bicycle Coalition of New Mexico, and a avid cyclist or bike fanatic, however you look at it. Ten fifty-one Chacoma Vista, eight seven five oh seven. I want to say congratulations, Mayor Weber. Thrilled to have you. Also to piggyback off of what Carl was saying, besides BTAC, I just want the councillors to all know that there already is a comprehensive bike plan in place for the city. That's a major resource, and it takes a lot of the brain work out of making things more bike-friendly. Also, it doesn't take a lot of money to make a place like Santa Fe, which is fairly small, more bike-friendly. We do have some fantastic mountain bike trails, but every day, I take my life in my own hands, just going home on my bicycle. I do it at night. I do it at night, often on roads with no shoulder. And some big projects that you will be looking at in the future, probably and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, are things like St. Mike's. There's a Remike program. I think the city is going to look at acquiring that from the state. Something to know about, that a big issue with the NMDOT also is the problem of incomplete paving. So repaving roads with no shoulder, which is why I take my life in my own hands every night. So I'll leave it at that, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well done. Okay. Thank you all for coming and for giving us your time and your advice, and we greatly appreciate it, and for your civility and good conduct, and thank you very much. Thank you. If you could exit as quietly as possible, we're going to move on with the agenda, which in this case, there are no appointments. Public hearings, case number, wait for them to go. Go back to where we were this afternoon. Okay, we'll do. Postpone. So that's postponed. So we go back, we resume our prior order. Let's wait one minute while we quietly let our friends leave. We can go? It's good. Okay. So we go back to item number sixteen, matters from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors in your packet, you did have the canvas that we completed last Friday, and this is the canvas of the March sixth, twenty eighteen election.
Just wait one minute, Yolanda. We'll let it. We had a good turnout, and it's going to be one second before folks are able to exit.
Ready?
Okay.
Start again. Thank you, Mayor Weber. In the packet, you did have our canvas for the March sixth, twenty eighteen election. So if you'll, those of you that are familiar with our canvases, you'll note that it is different than previous elections because of ranked choice voting. So if you look at the mayor's race, and District Two and District Four, those had ranked choice voting, those contests, the numbers that you have before you are by just the first round. So it's round one. So that is what was taken from the tapes and the memory cards for round one. So we did put in some language later on to tell you, you know, to look at different things regarding the ranked choice voting, but the first three pages are specifically just dealing with round one. The winners of the election, as you know, were, for mayor, Alan Weber; for District One, Signe Islandell; District Two, Carol Romero-Worth; District Three, Roman Tyger-Beta; and District Four, Joan Viejo Cocker. In your packet, there were some reports that we attached to our canvas, so that you could review those and the public could review them. We've made them a part of our canvas. Like I say, this is totally different than we've ever had before. I do want to encourage you to look at our website. We have a number of reports that we have placed on there that came out of the ranked choice voting software. So please look at that. You know, we invite the public to look at all of that data. There's a lot of raw data up there, but there are also some reports that GIS has pulled together, so that you can review.
Thank you. Questions from the council, the governing body? Yes, Council Harris.
Yes. Again, congratulations, Ms. Viejo. You heard it this evening, and I just want to make sure that you hear it from me in public. I've told you privately, but really, it was, you were under a lot of pressure, two and a half months, and you and your staff and the people who volunteered did a tremendous job. So congratulations. So is one of the reports on the city's website, does it show the breakdown by district for the mayoral candidates?
Yes. Mayor Weber, Council Harris, councilors, there is a report up there that does show the breakdown by district.
Okay.
So the votes are there by district.
For the mayoral candidate?
Yes.
All right, very good. I'll look at it there. Thank you.
Councilor Lindell? And then Councilor Villarreal?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Viejo, we talked briefly, but I did want to ask publicly if we have the ability to analyze votes that we didn't get to that level of, I don't know, what do you call it? What is it?
Expired votes?
Well, yeah.
Exhausted ballots?
Exhausted.
Exhausted ballots.
So, for example, in the mayoral race, do we have the data that would show us Councilor Trejillo's voters, who their second choice would have been? And the same could be in any of the other races, so that we could carry that through to its end point.
I'm trying to pull up here. So, Mayor Weber, Councilor Lindell, councilors, that data is available. However, I believe that that is one of the reports, or data that is raw data, that someone that has the software, it's called JSON, or JSON, that they can go in and actually get all of this data and compile reports. I don't believe that that is one of the ones that we have placed up on the website.
Is that, when you say one of the groups, is that Dominion that could do that?
Yes, I believe Dominion would probably be able to do that. Fair Vote may be able to do that. University of New Mexico. There's probably others that, I'm going to say that, you know, follow elections and do this kind of reporting, that would be able to do that.
Would we be able to make that request of one of these groups?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And also from me, a thank you for running a very, very professional election, and that making sure that we had it right, rather than making sure that we had it fast, was appreciated by me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Weber, I would like to add that for those of you that want to be looking at this data also, we will have the images of the ballots. The actual ballots would be, we will have them on our website, but that'll be in a little less than forty-five days, because we can display that forty-five days after our canvas. So people will be able to go and look at the actual images also of the ballots.
Thank you. Councilor Villarreal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just wanted to also echo my thanks to the team and all the people that helped with this election. It was different, and I think you all did a really good job, and the first time is always, you know, you have to, there's just kinks you have to work out, and I appreciate that you handled it with professionalism. The one question I had about the data, and I might have missed it in the information you gave us, is to actually show how many people ranked all five, or if there was a way to actually calculate that people ranked in most instances, or if there's a way to determine people only filled out one? I don't know. I'm just curious if there was a way to track that.
Mayor Weber, Council Villarreal, councilors, yes, I believe definitely that is one of the things that can come out of the data, the raw data. We don't have that up right now. There, I mean, how can I say this? If you want to put forward requests, we can see what we can get, and we can put those up on our website, but right now, those reports aren't there.
Okay. And I know they did exit polling, and that's just a snapshot, and they were projecting Fair Vote New Mexico had said sixty-one percent ranked five, all five, and I don't know if that's accurate, but. And it shows really low that people ranked just one candidate, or two or three, and I actually think there may be some nuances on that, and that's why I'm curious if we could actually look at that ourselves to determine that information.
We'll try and get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Council Rivera.
Yolanda, thanks as well for running a great election. Thank you very much for running a great election under the circumstances. So what I wanted to know is, can you give me the definition of an undervote again?
Oh, boy. So an undervote is, let me think this through this. So there's a blank ballot and an undervote. So undervote means that they don't go in and rank all of the candidates. Skip ranking is, you know, obviously, they skip over, they get out for a second, and they skip over that.
Just with the undervote, because that's what's listed here, but for District Three, it was five hundred and thirty undervotes out of one thousand nine hundred and forty people, and quick math for me is about twenty-seven percent. The next highest was in District One, which four hundred and forty-seven out of seven thousand two hundred and seventeen cast ballots, which is, that was the next highest, and that's like six percent of the total. So if we can look at why the, I don't know if it was an educational piece in District Three, where there are less people that attended the meetings regarding ranked choice voting, if we can help look at that, so that future elections, we can do whatever we can to better educate the people in District Three, or at least make them aware. And I know your people did a great job of helping them, and maybe that's just the way they wanted to cast their ballot, I don't know, but if we can try to get a better handle on that, so we can better educate in the future, I think that might be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes. Council Rivera Worth?
Ms. Viejo, I just want to thank you for your help all the way through the process, from the day I walked in, not knowing what I was jumping into, to, you know, the final night. I do have a quick question. Is there voter data available by precinct?
Mayor Weber, Council Romero-Worth, councilors, there is, I believe there is not data available by precinct, because we did not run our election by precinct, it was strictly by district. So we no longer go by precinct. I'll verify that, but I don't believe we can get that data.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? I have one thought, which you and I have already talked about, but I just wanted to put it back out there. In addition to recognizing that this was a, really a first historic occasion, historic election, and I think the work that went into getting this result that people had confidence in, and believed was done correctly and accurately and fairly, was a really important part of reaffirming the democratic process that's so critical here in Santa Fe and in New Mexico, and where in other parts of the country, it seems to be under attack and under assault and in question. So my congratulations to you on holding an election where in the, in the end, people felt that their votes counted and their participation mattered, and that it was done fairly and with great integrity. I do think there is also a tremendous opportunity to produce some kind of a report document, there are many forms it could take, of lessons learned, because there's always going to be lessons learned. There will always be things that we think worked extremely well, and people have, from the floor, spoken out about the really excellent job of voter education and outreach, and the way in which people found that they could learn to do something for the first time, because the city and public groups made an extremely competent and thoughtful effort to make that happen. There are things that could have been done better. There are possibly things that next time you wouldn't do at all. And we learned that they didn't work, or they were superfluous, or we worried for no reason about some kind of a problem that didn't manifest itself. So I think I would be happy to work with you and your staff, and I know Matt Ross, a report of some kind that says, thanks to them for their participation levels, record vote turnout. And also, it's not just a one-time activity. This is an ongoing activity of civic engagement and voter participation, and we, having heard from them, are now going to give them a report back and turn this into something that's an ongoing dialogue about this new process and how it's going to work going forward. So my offer to you is to work on that and to see if we can relatively quickly put out a kind of a report to the voters and to the people of Santa Fe, a thank you, but also a message on lessons learned and ways to go forward. Thank you. Questions, comments, others? Thank you very much for that. Communications from the governing body? I gather that the simplest way to do this is to start at one end and work our way forward. So, Council Romero-Worth, anything in the communications department from you? Not at this time. Council Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have five ordinances I'd like to introduce. They all read pretty much the same, so I will read in full the title to the first one, and then just cite the names of the other businesses, if I could do that.
Yes, that's okay.
So introducing an ordinance granting broadband network of New Mexico LLC, a non-exclusive franchise to operate a telecommunications network within the City of Santa Fe. The right to use city public rights of way to provide telecommunications services within the city, and fixing the terms and conditions thereof. In addition to broadband network of New Mexico, I would also be introducing an ordinance that states the same for Computer Network Service Professionals Incorporated, doing business as New Mexico SERF, NM SERF. Additionally, I'll be introducing an ordinance granting, in the same language, granting Contara Ultra Broadband LLC. Fourth will be introduction of an ordinance granting Cyber Mesa Computer Systems Incorporated, the same rights. An ordinance, and the last one is an ordinance granting Plateau Telecommunications Incorporated, a non-exclusive franchise. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, Council Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would introduce a resolution authorizing the sale and consumption of beer during the Party on the Pitch Soccer Tournament on June second to third, twenty eighteen, pursuant to section twenty-three dash six point two B of the Santa Fe City Code.
Thank you. Councilor Lindell?
I have nothing, no legislation to introduce. I just want to say, welcome to my new colleagues, all of them, and to my colleagues that I've worked with before. I look forward very, very much to working with everyone. I think that we have a focused, capable governing body sitting here right now, and I can't wait to get to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Villarreal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the same excitement of my new colleagues and our new team, and looking forward to working with all of you. with all of you and continuing to work with the new, not-so-newbies anymore. We're apparently veterans, they said, so.
Yes, you're now, you're now the old guard.
Right. And the other thing I wanted to say is thanks to all of those staff and my colleagues that reached out to offer their condolences for the passing of my grandfather, Ruben Mieda, and it was hard for our family, but he lived a long, purposeful life and I appreciate those of you that said kind words to me while I was out last week, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, welcome to all our new colleagues. I think we have a great makeup here of a promising governing body and I think we're going to do some great things, so. But let's start with some simple things first. As we started to move chairs, chairs, some of these drawers are locked and it doesn't look like there are keys or have been keys, so maybe we can get them all re-locked and reissued keys. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's make sure they're keys to the city for every counselor. Or if not to the city, at least to the desk drawer. Yes, Council Abeta.
Thank you, Mayor. I was talking with Council Rivera and we were wondering whether or not we could hold the March twenty-eighth meeting of the governing body at the South Side Library. That's something that was discussed numerous times throughout the campaign by different candidates and we figured, why not?
I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I would move to hold the March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the governing body at the South Side Library at the usual time set for the afternoon and evening sessions in Article Three of the governing body procedural rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Is there a comment? Is this a roll call vote? Voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those who wish to abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
And?
And I look forward to serving with all of you. I mean, this is, this is an extreme, honor and Council Rivera, I think we're going to do some great things for our district together. I go back with quite a few of you and I just, Council Villarreal, Santa Fe County, and we're back together again, and so again, I just, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vihil Copter.
Thank you, everyone. I too want to echo that I look forward to working with all of you and I'd like to say that it's a lot more interesting to sit on this side of the dais than to stand at the podium and give presentations from long ago. But I'm very happy to be here and very excited to work with you in the business that we have at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I want to add my thanks to everybody as I complete my second day on the job. We're off to a good, fast, collegial, but also a start that signals good listening to the voices from the citizens' residents of Santa Fe and building the team we need to get the job done so that the city continues to improve. And I want to extend my thanks to everybody and my hand of appreciation and collaboration. And I look forward to my third day on the job. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.